This clock is off by an hour. Only five minutes. Good evening and welcome to the November 3rd meeting of Bedford City Council. And if you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll please.
Longino.
Here.
Coche.
Here.
Spinks.
Here.
Salvi.
Here.
Lou Hardy.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Asbury.
Here.
Council, you have the minutes of the budget hearing of October 13th, 2025. Is there any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Longino and seconded by Smith? Call the roll please.
Longino.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Salvi.
abstain.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Asbury.
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the work session of October 20th, 2025. Any corrections to those? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Spinks, seconded by Salvi? Call the roll please.
Longino.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Asbury.
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of October 20th, 2025. Any corrections to those? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Spinks, seconded by Lou Hardy. Call the roll please.
Longino.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Asbury.
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the budget hearing of October 27th, 2025. Any corrections to those? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Asbury? Seconded by Smith? Call the roll please.
Longino.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Asbury.
Yes.
Well, now we get to the good part of the meeting. You can swear in three new police officers. We've been doing that a lot lately and it's a really good thing. Always when you get new energy into the departments of police, the fire, it just gets everybody motivated and and but we are gonna miss some of the old timers that are moving on. A lot of knowledge will be going away with them, but we have a few months where they can work together to gather some of that knowledge. But let me start off with William Palchesco. Well, let's just start off with the oath and then we'll chat a little bit.
Alright.
Raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, William Palchesco.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and laws of the city of Bedford, Ohio.
And the Charter and laws of the city of Bedford, Ohio.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the position of patrol officer.
Position of patrol officer.
Of the city of Bedford, Ohio.
The city of Bedford, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Be ready. Pin on that badge there. Alright. Good job. Do you have your 20 minute speech ready?
Yeah.
Do you want to introduce your family?
Uh, starting with my mom, uh, my girlfriend Ashley and my tribe of kids. Friend Erica, thank you for coming. Like to thank the chief of the city of Bedford for the opportunity and I can't wait to do the rest of my 19 year career, you know?
Good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Madison Sagata. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Madison Sagata.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and laws of the city of Bedford, Ohio.
And the Charter and laws of the city of Bedford, Ohio.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the position of patrol officer.
Of patrol officer.
Of the city of Bedford, Ohio.
City of Bedford, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Who's this?
This is my mother. She's crying.
Good job. And would you like to introduce your family or friends, whoever's with you or?
Yep, uh, my mom and my dad are here, along with my best friend Abby. Um, and just wanna say thank you, chief, and thank you, the city of Bedford, for giving us opportunity.
Great. And Andrew Prentice.
Aye.
Aye, Andrew Prentice.
Solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and laws of the city of Bedford, Ohio.
And the Charter and laws of the city of Bedford, Ohio.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the position of patrol officer.
Of the position of patrol officer.
Of the city of Bedford, Ohio.
Of the city of Bedford, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And who's your badge holder?
Uh, this is my mom.
Alright. Would you like to introduce family and friends?
Uh, so my mom, uncle, cousin, dad, stepmom, cousin, cousins, sister, sister-in-law, my ancestor here. And I want to say thank you to the chief and the city as well for this opportunity and I can't wait to start.
Well, welcome aboard. Can I say a few words, please?
Absolutely. Welcome here every Monday. Thank you everyone for coming. Uh, obviously thank you council, thank you to the city administration for allowing us to continue to go out and seek the best candidates we can find. We take the process very serious. As everyone knows, we've been trying to fill the ranks for quite some time. And so it takes that time because we go out and we try to find the very best. We added three more great people here today. One continuing his career in law enforcement and two stepping into the first chapter of it. And I'm very proud to say they're now members of the Bedford Police Department. So thank you.
Congratulations. And now, if you could take a short recess. You know, some of you guys wanna get over to the police department and I've already got some goodies or something over for you. You're all welcome to stay if you want. You get to go home. King first, alright. Let her roll at that. Yeah, council emergency. Alright, I think we can get back to business now. Under unfinished business, ordinance number 70-25.
26, 25, 70, 26, sorry. Oh, I got you. Okay, and ordinance amending, ordinance number 89-23 regarding section 13, 11 point 32 entitled Certificate of Inspection for Rental Unit Fees. To clarify that the fees charged are in direct relation to the cost that the city incurred in providing, uh, well, that the city incurs in providing services and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion for suspension by Asbury, seconded by Smith. Call the roll please.
Longino.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Asbury.
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Spinks, seconded by Lou Hardy. Call the roll please. Er, no. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I'm starting reading. I was starting reading. Did you jump in?
Yes.
Read it.
Yes.
And a third suspension for soliciting a third.
And a third reading, yeah, sorry.
Yes.
Motion for third reading, by Spinks. Seconded by Lou Hardy. There we go. Mike?
Sure. This is cleaning up our existing ordinance, as John mentioned, uh, it basically outlines, uh, where the funds for rental registration and inspections, where those funds, um, go towards. We adjusted fees within the building apartment a couple of years ago. One of those was the rental registration and inspection, which registration is required annually. There's costs associated with the inspections. We do not charge for any re-inspections. This basically, in this language dictates, just as John indicated, those funds go directly towards, uh, those services that are provided within the department.
Thank you. Call the roll please.
Longino.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Asbury.
Yes.
Ordinance number 72-25.
Is an ordinance amending, uh, chapters 13, 43 entitled Storm Water Ma- uh, Management and Site Development of our ordinance, uh, in the city and declaring an emergency.
I believe it's our wish to put that on second reading. I have a motion for such, by Lou Hardy, seconded by Spinks. Mike, you wanna touch on that real quick?
I'll just give a real quick outline regarding the net, this one and the next two. We are required annually to inspect all of our outfalls as, in regards to stormwater management, um, as well as inspections down at the race water treatment plant. We've been working with the Calhoga County, uh, Soil and Water Conservation District as well as, uh, the Ohio EPA and GPD. These three ordinances right now- These three ordinances right now have been on the books. However, in order for them to reflect the current Ohio EPA standards, we need to amend them. And that's what we're doing this evening. We're cleaning up this legislation so it meets the Ohio EPA standards, and so our, it reflects the accuracy in our permitting that we apply for it.
Call the roll, please.
Longino.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Blue Hardy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Asbury.
Yes.
Ordinance number seventy-three dash twenty-five.
Amends chapter thirteen forty-five, which is entitled Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan and Site Development of the City of Bedford and declaring an emergency.
Again, we wish to put that on second reading. I have a motion for such, by Blue Hardy, second by Spinks. Mike, explain those. Call the roll, please.
Longino.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Blue Hardy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Asbury.
Yes.
And ordinance number seventy-four dash twenty-five.
Amends chapter thirteen forty-seven entitled Illicit Discharge and Illegal Connection Control of our ordinances and declaring an emergency.
And again, motion for second reading. By Asbury, second by Smith. Call the roll, please.
Longino.
Yes.
Coche.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Blue Hardy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Asbury.
Yes.
But before we get into our reports, I want to jump ahead, jump in here a little bit. We have some really good news for the city. You know, we talked about how good our Finance Department is, because they are. And we just went to Standard and Coors to get our general obligation fund rating from Standard and Coors, and they took us from a double A minus to a double A. The significance is, nobody around, no city around here has a double A. And, and let me read you some words, and this is from Standard and Coors, nothing we made up. S and P Global Ratings raised its long-term rating of Bedford, Ohio's general obligation debt to double A from double A minus. A higher rating reflects the city's improved reserves, supported track record of consecutive surplus and sound budgeting practices. The double A rating reflects Bedford's robust reserves and steady financial performance anchored by management's comprehensive budgeting and strong fiscal oversight. Available reserves have generally been maintained above thirty-five percent of operating revenue, and in the past decade, above fifty percent since twenty twenty-one. Awesome. The city adheres to a reserve policy that establishes a fifteen percent floor. That's all we need to be at. We're at a fifty percent. That's tremendous. We consider management proactive with budgeting based on historical analysis and capital needs. And their outlook, the stable outlook reflects our view that Bedford will continue its positive financial track record and maintain robust reserves guided by sound fiscal practices and supported by its stable tax base. That is just tremendous news for the city. And that's due to the hard work of our Finance Department headed by Jennifer Holland. And let everybody in your, your department know, we, we appreciate it, and this shows. We always knew you guys were good, but this stuff really kicks it off.
The credit does not, doesn't just go to Finance Department, it goes to the Economic Development Department as well, and just, as well as the City Managers Department, and for Council, to Council as well for their support.
I was going to get to the other two. Our Finance, Economic Development person, Jennifer Kuzma, has been instrumental in helping out. And of course, it's under the leadership of our City Manager, Mike Malice, who just did a tremendous job. And we appreciate that, Mike, and your staff too.
I'll just, I just want to add that the last time the city was at a double A was before Benvenu closed. When Benvenu closed, the rating agencies lowered us. And, you know, it's taken time, but we've proven, I think, over the track record, and for them to bring us back up to that level, it's a big deal for, for the city. And ultimately, it's going to save all of our taxpayer dollars when we, when we go and we issue debt in the future for large projects. If we're going to borrow for a new ladder truck, or if we're going to be doing more streets. A bond rating is basically your credit rating. And the better, the higher rating you have, the less it's, the less it's going to cost the, the city and the residents to borrow money. So getting this raised back up is, it's, it's a big win, a big win. So, thank you, Mayor, and thank you to Jennifer's staff.
Absolutely. And with that, Mike, if you want to start our reports off.
Just want to mention a few items, primarily some upcoming events. We do have on, let me look here. This Friday, we have a Veterans Brunch that's scheduled from ten-thirty to twelve at Allenwood to honor our veterans. That is, registration is required for that. If you visit our website and social media outlets, you'll see that information and links to go ahead and register for that event. We also have on November eleventh, or at eleven o'clock, our Veterans Day Ceremony that's going to take place at Veterans Park, right in the heart of the historic district. We also have our annual tree lighting ceremony scheduled for the twenty-sixth of November. That is at six P M. sharp, bound on the square. Just want to point out that leaf collection is underway. They're starting to fall and fall quickly. We have made it around the community a couple of times already. We'll continue making our rounds. One thing I'll just ask is, please try to keep that on your tree lawn and not into the street. Those will make their way into the catch basins, and I'm certain that residents on your street will be calling us when the rain falls and the street is backed up. Because they will block those catch basins and, and get into the sewers. So please, if you don't mind keeping those on the, on the, on the tree lawn. And I just want to point out and give a congratulations to two individuals that were nominated by their peers within the department. Lieutenant Ryan Turk in our Fire Department, and Patrolman Matt Nganska in the Police Department have been nominated as the Officers of the Year this year by their peers in the department. So congratulations to both of those individuals. They'll be honored this Saturday at the Bedford Eagles. With that, end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Montal.
Yes, sir, just wanted to welcome the new officers, congratulate the City Manager and the Finance Director in her department and Council, and everyone that works for the city. It really is a team effort. But anyway, other than that, don't forget to vote. Good luck to all the candidates, and have a good night.
Thank you. Mrs. Holland.
Thank you, Mayor. Did I speak earlier, it's not just the Finance Department, it is all the departments. Economic Development played a big role in this, as well as the City Manager. I also wanted to congratulate the new officers and the officers up here.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Longino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I won't break the record for the longest Council's speech. But I will say, remember to vote tomorrow. Andy, what you saying?
Vote, your vote is powerful.
That's our stand, and one vote, and you, don't complain if you have a vote, right?
That's right.
Okay, so I went to make sure I said it. Mike stole all my other stuff about the Veterans Day Ceremony, about the Veterans Day. I knew you was going to do it, and about the leaves, so, but I guess I want to send a little shout out. Well, I guess, yes, a little shout out to Little Bear Cats, where my brother is the commissioner for the Little Bear Cats football team. They won the championship, so now they decided they're going to go, I think the Columbus, to go to another step forward, to maybe like a national. But they did win for their, for, they were the only, they had several teams with the Little Bear Cats, but they did win their part of it. So, I definitely want to say that. And congratulations to our three new patrolmen, and just saying how I miss being on the Civil Service Commission, and that was one of the things I did enjoy. I did that for five years before I became part of the City Council. And, and it was, I guess it's a great follow-up to something that I had thought about that I wanted to say. And I wrote it up, because my wife said if I don't write stuff down, I ramble. Which I ramble, you don't, I write it down. So, when I was a road cop, as, as a lot of you know, I was a patrolman for twenty years before I went to Beechwood and worked at the schools. You get a call, you get a response to a call, and you get there, and there's somebody, one of the citizens or whoever made the call. Sometimes they would come, and not all the time. I never see a cop on my street. So, I would always reply, you sleep, you work, you spend time with your family, right? But, because guess what, while you're sleeping, working, and spending time with your family, we're patrolling, so we got your six. But when you call, guess what, we're there. So I say that, and I guess it's kind of the same way with being a councilperson. When people say, I never see my councilperson, I never see him. It's the same thing. Unless you sit in front of your house twenty-four seven. You sleep, you spend time with your family, and you work. But one thing you need to make sure is, and as Mike has, and if anybody can honestly say, I'm always available. Sandy always told me, return your emails, return your calls. Make sure when somebody gets in contact with you, that Mike can tell you how many times, like, the next call is either to Mike or the Police Department. You're always going to get an answer from me, it just might not be the answer you want to hear. But you will get an answer. So remember that, I'm always available. And when you say I never see my councilman, unless you sleep in front of your house. You probably haven't saw me, but I am out there. With that, I yield my time.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks.
Good evening. Congratulations to our new police officers. It's good to see that we had another female officer added to our body group. It's just, that's one thing over the last twelve years of seeing so many, you've gone through, this is our third chief, which is a good thing. And they've all been different, they've all been so just amazing team, and that's just it. It's a team up here. It's just so lucky, we may not always get along or agree on some things, but that's okay, that's, that's life. But I tell you what, the, you know, it gets aggravating sometimes, yes, do we need to do things with our sidewalks? I'm working on it. It takes time to bring back, just like, but things like this with the team that we have, we'll be able to, you know, bring back those rate programs. And we, we know, we see it, and it gets aggravating, I know, every week. I'm in, and Debbie, I know you're watching, Perina, she sees me on a daily basis coming in, she goes, oh, what now? You know, she sees me coming down the hallway. But the potholes, the, the stuff that we're getting now is like, it's like everything, it takes a long time to get in. And then Mike can tell you, the stuff that we get to fill in the asphalt, it's not like what it used to be. You do it within a couple of rains or whatever, it's, you've got that pothole here, and again, gushed with our old infrastructure. Is, you can, Mike can tell you too, with the catch basins and stuff, that's why we're always, always saying, please don't, you know, in the summer times, don't blow your grass out, I think. With the same thing with the leaves, with catching up there, because we have old infrastructure. Our guys, for what, the amount of employees that we have in our service department, water department, they, they do a good job. Sometimes they, you don't see it, but it's just amazing, and we're so lucky, the two Jennifers that we have is the reason why we get reports like that. Economically, we don't even know the amount of stuff that the, the two Jennifers do together, keeping these big companies that have, you know, they, they didn't, they regrew, outgrew where they were. So, they found somewhere, and they were able to keep these, like Shore Electric is one I'm talking about, and they're expanding. Eigma, getting ready to expand. This, this, this happens with teamwork. And I've so been so proud to be a part of that. It's, you know, not one of us up here, not one of us councilpeople do that on our own. We don't bring the job stuff. We can put, we sure promote our city to do it. But it's these guys that do, or we got some of the best head of departments, and it's been an honor to work with these people. I am so proud. We got a long way to go, we're getting there. And talking about the trees and stuff, Mike, we, and Debbie, you're listening too. Huge, huge tree, and Rick Duski back there probably would know what kind of tree it is. It's, I've talked about it, it is very, very large. It's starting to push asphalt on the street up. It's pushing up a side, the, the residence driveway, this is on Gould. And first, we have one arborist, we have one person that does that stuff. These are things, these are quality live things, and it does get aggravating, and I, you got aggravated last time because you see that, you're coming out, you're taking on, paying all these taxes and doing this and that. But, you know, state's cutting things, county's cutting things. It's just being able to bring those, those things back and being able, we're known as a tree city. Mike, we had how many trees removed this year? I know a lot, just in my word alone.
I don't know how, I don't know how many we've removed, I know we replanted over a hundred, closer to a hundred and fifty.
And those trees, like way before our time, we, none of us were up here with those trees that are pushing up, you know, the sidewalks, getting in the sewage. And that's, that's the aggravating, aggravating part of this, is not being able to turn around and do that quick fix on that. But we got the, those things will come back. See a lot of familiar faces out here, a lot of my residents who are now like family to me. I thank each and every one of y'all for coming in, all of your support. I had to see Betsy, my partner in crime at the museum, and Lori Schroder, who feels like she's on a war check with me every morning, and sometimes she is. And she gets it, it's a lot, huddle Lori, huddle Lori. But Lori, thank you for being, she's like my, my sidekick in the morning time, and sometimes in the afternoons. I can, yes, and so, thank you to the resident this morning on Southwick is doing my, I call it getting the kids off to school. I leave my house about seven, seven fifteen in the morning, so I can greet the kids and make sure that I, you know, that little bit of thing of saying, hey, have a good day at school, and, you know, make me proud, bring home those, you know, sand degrees and stuff like that. And like you can mentor in central schools, so a lot of my kids I know. Well, doing my rounds this morning, right in the middle of, of Southwick is a dog, a little puppy. So, thank you to the resident who got out this morning and helped me chase this dog and find its home. A little boy that was getting ready to go at the bus stop and accidentally opened the front door and forgot to shut it, and so the dog got out. And I didn't, I don't know who was scared, me or the dog, because I was like, please don't bite me. And so things like that. Kudos to the Fire Department this weekend, well, Friday, on Halloween. They did, I don't know if you saw it, they did such an amazing, fun job of decorating the fire station. They had ladders up the side with these crazy skeletons dressed in the Fire Department gear hanging off, and, and then gave out candy. And the mayor came over to my house and his wife, and we gave out candy, and we probably had, what, about three hundred kids?
We had a lot.
We, there was a lot of kids. We ran out of candy about seven forty-five. And some of the kids were real thrilled that the mayor was giving them candy, they thought it was chopped liver. But, let's see, what else we got? I'm sure you'll go to speak. Mike, still asking for, the speeding has got a lot better. It's still, still got them, but since we have our traffic unit, it has made a big difference, and I know those guys. And we were talking about the tickets writing, and I noticed the guys are out there, these tickets on these cars parking overnight. That's another, if you have to park on the street, call and tell them. Because if not, you're going to get a ticket. There's reason for some people will just use it for a second driveway. Let's see, a spare walk at the Historical Society did last weekend, was a little bit over sixty people, Betsy? Yeah, it was awesome, and great job as always. Rich, again, thank you. Rich is, is one of our board members back there, and thank you. So, end of report. Don't forget to vote tomorrow.
Thank you. Mr. Salvi.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I join the Mayor and Council's congratulations to Andrew, Madison, and William, becoming Bedford Police Officers. May each officer serve our community with distinction and have a long I may each officer serve our community with distinction and have a long and successful career. Uh, residents visit some calls, uh, since the October twentieth council meeting, I visited more to residents as well as responded to resident in-person and phone inquiries. Examples of inquiries and concerns residents included people ignoring stop signs, littering, uh, need for street curb repair, and about who was responsible for the federal government shutdown, and finger pointing is going both ways. Uh, perhaps a person got the same email or received from Congresswoman Chantel Brown regarding the shutdown and who was responsible. From her email, we give her constituents the belief that she voted for the appropriations bill. I know there are a lot of SNAP recipients in this area, and I looked up the actual vote record of Ohio Con- of the Ohio Congressional delegation, specifically how our member of Congress voted. Uh, some members of the public may not know this, but you can find out how your member of Congress votes on specific legislation online. So I checked the official government records to find out how Congressman Woman, uh, Brown voted on H, uh, H R fifty-three seventy-one, which is the Continuing Appropriations Extentions Act, which needed to pass to prevent the government shutdown. The official voting record shows that Congresswoman Brown voted against approving the appropriations bill, as most of her colleagues have done in the U.S. House and Senate, which caused the initial shutdown and continues the shutdown and impact on the SNAP program. The appropriations bill is now stuck in the U.S. Senate, where I understand Brown's colleagues have continued to vote against approving the appropriations bill, at least thirteen times, leading to the longest government shutdown in history. So if you want to open up the government, call your members of Congress in the House and Senate and ask them to vote yes in favor of the continuing appropriations bill. Two sixty Columbus Road variances, I also visited the neighbors of the home at two sixty Columbus Road regarding the fence variances that went before the Board of Zoning and Appeals, who have voted, stayed approved, or denied their, uh, decision to approve. One neighbor approved the variance, and the other didn't actually adore, so I will likely vote in favor of the zoning board's decision, uh, if allowing the variances unless someone involved presents convincing testimony, testimony before we vote today. Shooting on Overlook, unfortunately, the veteran police department had recently responded to a domestic shooting on Overlook in Ward Two. Hopefully, the victim who reportedly was shot in a leg is recovering, and the wound doesn't cause permanent disability. The alleged female shooter was arrested, and the investigation of the shooting is ongoing. Any gun owner who can't control their emotions would benefit by selling their guns and get competent anger management help before they kill someone and end up in prison. Taking steps to prevent crime saves taxpayers a lot of money by avoiding costly trial and incarceration costs. Chimney fire on High Street, the veteran fire department responded to a chimney fire on High Street on October twenty-ninth, twenty-ninth. Luckily, there were no reported injuries, and the residents were lucky, the damage was limited to the fireplace, and their home didn't burn down. Uh, this is a timely season reminder to have your chimney professionally checked and maintained to ensure it is safe to use this winter. The Bedford School District, when I was a student in the Bedford City School District in nineteen sixties and seventies, Bedford schools were considered an above-average school district. For a number of years now, the Bedford City School District is ranked near the bottom of the six hundred-plus school districts in Ohio. Poor academic performance is also, is often blamed on low, low per pupil spending, where this cannot be the case as, as Bedford's per pupil spending has been equivalent to, or near equivalent to that of the top school districts in Ohio for many years. This is not a model for long-term success for the city of Bedford, residents, or students who attend the school district. Due to the significant impact a school district's reputation has on a city's reputation and economics of se- exists, economic success, administrations of Bedford, Bedford Heights, Oakwood, and Walton Hills should consider how the schools can return to the above-average school system it used to be. The school system gets a huge amount of residents' tax dollars, and it's painful for many taxpayers to write checks for thousands of dollars in property taxes. Much of it, uh, goes to the schools year after year, yet Bedford City School District's academic success continues to flounder when compared to the vast majority of Ohio school districts. Airbnbs, uh, yesterday, there was reported nine individual, individuals shot or otherwise injured after an illegal party at a Bath Township home. In two thousand seventeen, a Bedford woman who had, who was responsible for renting a Bath home for an illegal party, in which one of the reported three hundred attendees got shot during a drive-by. Uh, this reminded me of that Airbnb incident in Bedford a few years ago, I think it happened on Woodrow. I remember an impassioned resident spoke at this podium complaining that his family had deliberately leave their home on weekends for the safety of his family and children, as the next-door Airbnb rental home became an out-of-control party house. That family is a result moved from the city of Bedford. Mike or John, does Bedford have any specific ordinances regulating Airbnbs now?
We, John and I are currently reviewing all of that, I just want to point out that, that, that it was not, the Woodrow was not a shooting.
Oh, I, yeah, I didn't say it was a shooting, uh, just basically, uh, uh, basically, the neighbors were so scared of what was going on at that house, uh, they left, um, they moved away. The shooting I was referencing was a Bedford resident who I found out was responsible for renting the, uh, uh, basically, a mansion in, uh, Bath Township in two thousand seventeen, in which that, uh, drive-by shooting occurred.
Okay, not, it didn't happen here.
No, right.
That's further ahead, that did not happen.
Yes. Downtown Bedford Historic District, although I didn't observe the service departments cleaning the sidewalks on Broadway Avenue last week, in the historic district, it was noticeably cleaner, falling leaves and trash, so thank you. Um, unfortunately, uh, this week, the leaves and trash were blowing again, and, uh, after cleaning up in front of the law office this morning, uh, the debris was back by lunchtime. If we can perhaps, uh, as I requested, I mentioned at the last council meeting, if we can give notice to the business owners to clean up their sidewalks, that would be appreciated. Taff Park, uh, Mike, is it gonna be possible to get a cost estimate to return the ice rink at Taff Park?
So, I don't, I would say as of right now, I don't have a cost estimate, and I would, there's a couple reasons why. One, uh, one of our staff members actually, uh, filled me in on why that primarily ended. It ended because the ice wasn't freezing as much as it used to decades ago, and juveniles were throwing the ice into the roadway and towards houses thirty-plus years ago. And at the time, City Manager Dickard says, we're done with these ice rinks in the parks. Um, I did recently have a conversation with our board, uh, we're part of the Ohio Plan when I was in, um, Toledo, regarding turning these areas how they used to be, is that something that they would be, you know, how would our insurance, how would our coverage reflect that? And they were extremely, um, they didn't give me an answer, but they basically said, that is not something you really want to go down the road of doing. If you want an ice rink, you should have a dedicated ice rink in a space that's properly fenced, that's properly staffed, um, lighted, all of that. So, um, while I'm not giving my official opinion tonight, I would say based on those reasons, I would highly suggest that we don't do that. But, that, those were the, that was the primary reason why the city went away with, uh, the ice rink off of Willard, which was behind St. Pius, uh, the Taff Park, and I think there was a third one, it's slipping my mind. Uh, but we have a, we have a staff member still on, um, our staff today that was present at the time, and he remembers it being a pretty hot topic, and why, uh, City Manager Dickard made that decision to cease that. Because, one, um, filling it, if it doesn't stay frozen all the time, it is now a liability, it could be a hazard for juveniles going in an area that may not be able to hold them. Um, even if it is a very small amount of water, you don't, you don't want to do that. But, two, those chunks of ice were getting scattered around, um, the area, and that's why, those were the reasons why that was ceased back then. Um, my biggest concern would be safety and security of the space, safety for anybody that would be utilizing it. Uh, and I'd have to have further discussions with our insurance carrier, uh, the initial discussion I had with them, they, they were not warm and fuzzy about that. They had suggested, if that's something the city would want to do, you'd have to create almost a dedicated area. I would say we've had some discussions with companies that provide something very similar. Um, and we've had discussions of doing something like that in a historic district during the winter months, um, where the commons is decorated for, with holiday lights, uh, very similar to what Pinecrest does, very similar to what University Circles does. It's actually not ice, it is, it is a fake ice material, um, that is brought in, they fence that space off, they actually provide all of the rental for state rental, all of that. Um, I think it would be more prudent for us to go that route if we were to provide something like that. But that, that could be, uh, more conversations down the road.
Thank you, City Manager. Lastly, uh, maintenance violations, I attended the hearing at Bedford Municipal Court on October twenty-seventh, and, and referencing Bay Market. Uh, defendant received another continuance, and the next hearing is Monday, uh, nine AM, December eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Lastly, Ohio House Bill ninety-two, I called the Ohio Legis- uh, Ohio Legislative Service Commission today to identify the bill City Manager Malice mentioned as a bill that might prevent the city of Bedford from recouping water sewer charges and other costs associated with actions taken by the city to adjust, address health and safety issues. I will, uh, review this bill and give a brief report on it during my next council report, perhaps suggest we consider a draft, uh, we consider drafting a resolution to send, uh, to the legislature if appropriate, uh, thank you and the report.
Mr. Fuherdy. Come up for some air here. Uh, getting you just piggyback off that ice skating thing, you know, fifty-five years ago, when we were ice skating, sixty years ago, nobody was suing anybody for doing things, that's another problem, that's the reason why you wouldn't get it today. Want to congratulate the three officers, Andrew, Madison, and William. Want to also, uh, wish everybody for the election tomorrow, don't forget to vote, uh, good luck come the, tomorrow. This is the first time in twelve years I haven't been on the ballot, which is really weird and strange, but I know, I get to sleep in tomorrow. So, that's a good thing, but, uh, anyhow, I, I'm, I'm gonna miss it, and, uh, it's that, uh, that competitiveness of, uh, beating somebody, I think I've done that my whole life, but, uh, between playing sports, I just tied right in to beating somebody on the, on the, on the streets too. But, uh, I am, I am gonna miss it, and I hope to rest you guys, good luck, uh, you should be okay, uh, in the report. Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Good evening, first of all, I'd like to, uh, congra- congratulations to three newly sworn officers. Secondly, Officer of the Year and the Fireman of the Year, congratulations. Also, big congratulations to the city, I'm not just gonna say, I'm gonna say the city because, the, um, Finance Director, City Manager, and Economic Development, um, Director, along with City Council. Without us operating as a team, this would have, this would have not happened. And just for our residents, I'd like to say that, if you don't really know what this means for the city and for your tax dollars, we are actually gonna save billions of dollars. As the City Manager said, when we go out to issue debt, this really, really helps us. I know residents are, are always, right here, why are you spending this money, what are you doing with this? But this shows that money that we are spending, we're spending it right, we, we, we are, um, spending on the right things, even though people might not believe it, but we are, I truly believe that, I know there are other people in the city that believe it, but there are some that say, you know, um, you're not spending on the right thing, that's gonna happen, it's life, everybody can't be, uh, satisfied with one gesture. So, congratulations to the man, the city, the council, all involved. Last thing, get out and vote. I'm from, I heard, my early childhood, I was always taught, regardless of what's on the ballot, whatever, if there's something that you need, when you get old enough to vote, you go and vote. Don't sit back and, and wait for other people to vote, um, cause you can't complain. You don't vote, keep your mouth closed, and I said that, don't complain, in report.
Mr. Esbury.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll be brief, my voice is a little raspy tonight. Um, congratulations to our three newly sworn in, uh, patrol officers, hopefully you have a long and safe career here in Bedford. Congratulations to firefighter Turk and Officer Ganska as, as being nominated for Officers of the Year, very truly deserved. Um, I'd like to thank the City Manager, had a couple issues, uh, one on Lamson and, and one on Wondell this past couple weeks. Nothing outrageous, but, uh, with the help of police and, uh, building department, we're getting those taken care of. Excuse me, and like everybody else echoed, uh, vote tomorrow. Port two votes at the high school, port one, three, and six at Helenwood, and four and five at Kalendale. Polls open at six thirty AM and close at seven thirty PM, so get out and vote, do your civic duty, and a report.
Thank you. Now let's move along with our city business. Is the first motion there, John?
Yes, sir, can I, uh, can some, someone make a motion to accept the Board of Zoning Appeals decision approving, uh, Ms. Robinson Wood's, uh, requ- request, I'm sorry, request to replace an existing fence located at two sixty Columbus Street in Bedford.
Did I have a motion for such, by Spinks, second by Fuherdy? This motion was approved by Planning, and, uh, as we do it, a yes vote means you agree with the Planning Commission, uh, you don't agree with them. With that, call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fuherdy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hasbury?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventy-seven dash twenty-five.
Is, uh, is one allowing employee participants to make insurance plan premium contributions on a pre-tax basis for the calendar year two thousand twenty-six through Health Equity H Works declaring emergency?
Motion for suspension, Spinks, second by Fuherdy, call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fuherdy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hasbury?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Smith, second by Longino. Uh, Mike, or Jennifer, you have this one?
We do this every year, every year, we have to allow the employees to, um, not be taxed on their premiums, that they pay for their medical insurance. This helps us save money, and it's up to council to approve it, so that this happens for them.
And we've been doing this for many, many years, just a continuation, thank you, call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fuherdy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hasbury?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventy-eight dash twenty-five.
Authorizing the City Manager to enter into a contract with Assured Partners, who is the city's broker for cyber risk liability insurance and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension, Hasbury, second by Longino, call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fuherdy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hasbury?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Fuherdy, second by Spinks. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mayor. So our insurance broker Assured Assured Partners goes out and searches for cyber liability insurance for us. They found a a big policy for trailers insurance. He uses this company for years and we're just asking that council approve this coverage for the next year.
Call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fuherdy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hasbury?
Yes.
Ordinance number 79-25.
Authorizing a contract with MES for the purchase of five sets of fire decks Aeroflex turnout turnout gear for the fire department and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Salvy, second by Fuherdy. Call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fuherdy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hasbury?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Hasbury, second by Longino. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. As John mentioned, this is to purchase five sets of turnout gear for the fire department. These this purchase was made available through a grant roughly in the amount of $22,000 from Firehouse House.
Chief, remember when we outfit the whole department for $22,000?
A couple times.
Call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fuherdy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hasbury?
Yes.
Ordinance number 80-25.
Is an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and expenditures of the city during the year 2026 and declaring an emergency.
I wish to put that on first reading. Motion by Smith, second by Hasbury. Touch on that, John.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. This is the first of three readings for next year's budget. About it?
Get her ready and get her down. Call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fuherdy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hasbury?
Yes.
Ordinance number 81-25.
Authorizing a contract with GPD Group for the wastewater treatment plant headworks upgrade project modification 1A and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Fuherdy, second by Spinks. Call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fuherdy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hasbury?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Hasbury, second by Smith. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the primary upgrades that we are were recommending to take place at the wastewater plant was the headworks upgrade. We were about 85% completed on the design and we did pause this the work in the spring of this year mainly to make sure that during our negotiations with the Ohio EPA that they were on board and supported this project being first and foremost. And that was reiterated by the Ohio EPA about a month and a half ago. So it's our intention to now move forward and finish the remainder of the design. That design would need to be submitted to the Ohio EPA for review by the end of January of 2026. This piece of legislation here is simply adjusting the the fees due to GPD's billing rates which council had passed after the remaining modifications were proposed. So this is merely to reflect their current billing rate for the additional work.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fuherdy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hasbury?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Hasbury, second by Smith. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the primary upgrades that we are were recommending to take place at the wastewater plant was the headworks upgrade. We were about 85% completed on the design and we did pause this the work in the spring of this year mainly to make sure that during our negotiations with the Ohio EPA that they were on board and supported this project being first and foremost. And that was reiterated by the Ohio EPA about a month and a half ago. So it's our intention to now move forward and finish the remainder of the design. That design would need to be submitted to the Ohio EPA for review by the end of January of 2026. This piece of legislation here is simply adjusting the the fees due to GPD's billing rates which council had passed after the remaining modifications were proposed. So this is merely to reflect their current billing rate for the additional work.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fuherdy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hasbury?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Hasbury, second by Smith. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the primary upgrades that we are were recommending to take place at the wastewater plant was the headworks upgrade. We were about 85% completed on the design and we did pause this the work in the spring of this year mainly to make sure that during our negotiations with the Ohio EPA that they were on board and supported this project being first and foremost. And that was reiterated by the Ohio EPA about a month and a half ago. So it's our intention to now move forward and finish the remainder of the design. That design would need to be submitted to the Ohio EPA for review by the end of January of 2026. This piece of legislation here is simply adjusting the the fees due to GPD's billing rates which council had passed after the remaining modifications were proposed. So this is merely to reflect their current billing rate for the additional work.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fuherdy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hasbury?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Hasbury, second by Smith. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This bill reflects the casting adjustments and the work order change that was authorized by ODOT and the contractor to adjust all of the castings that are tied to Cleveland Water's 40-inch main that runs the length of Broadway. Initially, the city was in dispute of these charges because it is Cleveland Water's utility, not our utility. Ultimately, the contract is with ODOT and the city of Bedford. Our intention is to close out this contract with ODOT and thus we will be billing Cleveland Water for these casting adjustments that we're gonna approve tonight.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvy?
Yes.
Fuherdy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hasbury?
Yes.
Now we come to hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward. State your name, your address, and your comment.
Hi, I'm Marion Armstrong. I'm the supervisor of pupil personnel from Bedford City Schools and I am here tonight to talk to you a little bit about special ed. And I don't believe that things happen by accident because I loved hearing Councilman Salvy's comments about the school because this is exactly what I was gonna talk about today. Bedford City Schools has a large population of students with special needs. And we have a lot of the whole range of students. We have students with who are medically fragile that need a one-on-one nurse with them every day. We have students who are coming in from out of state, on district, even in from our own communities with very severe autism who are nonverbal, who need a one-on-one aide in order for them to access their education. So I do agree, Mr. Salvy, that we may have a higher per pupil per capita rate but 20 about 24% of our students in our district have special needs right now. They're on what's called an IEP and it is that does sound like a lot but I'm going to turn it around because I'm always positive. People laugh at me because I'm always looking at the bright side. People are coming to Bedford because we have a good special ed department. People are coming to Bedford because they know we're gonna take care of their kids. We started the Bear Program last year. I don't know if you're familiar with the Bear Program. It is a special school for students with autism. We have 12 students and we have eight staff serving those students. In one year, we saw students who were toileting themselves. Is this something that we didn't have to do 30 years ago? We have to do that now. We have to help toilet our children. We have students who did not say a word that are starting to use sign language, starting to communicate with their devices, starting to talk, use words. Those things are expensive but our students deserve a good education and they deserve for us to meet them where they're at and scaffold to bring them to where they can possibly be to their highest potential. Today, we start a program called the PAU program. It's Pathways to Academic Wellness. It's for students who for some reason their behavior, their mental health, for some reason they're not able to function in a regular classroom. It's grades five through eight. We have five students and it's a very therapeutic program. Students attend from 92. They start with therapy. They do academics. They end with therapy every single day. It is our hope to teach them coping skills and anger management skills and social skills so that they can be productive and be able to work with others and be productive citizens. So I agree, yes, we do spend a lot of money on our kids but our kids deserve what we spend on them. I'm very proud of the work we do at Bedford City Schools and I'm very proud of the kids and the families that we service because we have some exceptional families with some great needs and whatever we can do for the Bedford City Schools, we're gonna take care of it. So thank you.
Thank you. And I don't think special education or how I would refer to it gets enough attention what you do there but it's terrific work that Small Court does.
Thank you. 37 years ago when I started this job, these kids were not in school. These kids were at home. These kids were institutionalized. These kids were sent away and now they deserve to be with their typical peers. And so we bring them all. We love them all. We take care of them all. We embrace them all. And yeah, it does cost a little bit more but I'm gonna keep doing the work and our teachers are gonna keep doing the work. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. You mentioned 37 years. That's not 37 years in our school system?
No, I did 34 years in that our partnership schools and then I'm here for this and my 32.
Anybody else? Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chelsea Pryor. I reside at 33 Tudor Avenue and I just wanted to raise some something that's kind of been on my heart. As I look around at the demographic of our city, as I look around at the current state of federal affairs right now, I myself am a career employee of the Department of War. And so I you know I see these things firsthand. I firsthand serve our veterans. I make sure they get paid and I am an analyst in that area. So I know numbers a little bit enough. So I've listened to tonight and a lot of great things that we are doing here in our city and I am very proud to say that I do live here. And I just wanted to raise the issue of these shutdowns and what the impact may cause on our fellow neighbors, your constituents. Because my concern is you know generally what the city plans to do while Congress continues to play politics with people's lives. The truth is, you know, yes, the recent appropriations bill was voted down but it wasn't due to Democrats not wanting to fund SNAP or healthcare to be accessible. It was voted down because it was tied to provisions that would ultimately raise healthcare as we've known and the premiums that would have probably put people out of house at home and slashed vital programs that are needed for people to sustain and have a decent livelihood. So in short, it was a clean bill as we all know. And it was a loaded one and refusing it to pass is not just because it's a harmful bill. It's it's not it's not negligence. It's a discernment. Meanwhile, parts of our federal government seem completely comfortable withholding public the public's food and healthcare hostage just to make a political point. And the people who will suffer aren't in DC. They're right here in Bedford. Bedford has about, please correct me if I'm wrong on some of these numbers. I did pull them, about 13,000 residents or so? Okay. More than half of whom are black or African American? Okay. Our median household income is around 56,000. Okay. Nearly 12% of our residents live below the poverty line. All right. So for families, that means that the unexpected medical bills, one lost paycheck or one lapse in benefits can spiral into a crisis. So when these federal standoffs hit and families can no longer afford their healthcare or groceries, what is our plan as a city council? Are we strengthening partnerships with local hospitals or clinics to help those who become uninsured? Are we expanding access to food pantries or emergency aid programs? Are there contingency measures put in place? Is anything being discussed about that? I know we can take care of ourself and our and our water and our trees and the things that are great to make the city look beautiful on the outside but what goes on behind the walls of someone's home who may even be on the verge of losing their home or getting put out of their home because they can't afford to pay extremely high healthcare. I am fortunate because I yes, I'm a federal employee. My healthcare is taken care of. I'm I'm okay. But this is not about me. This is about the people I live next door to and the people that I see, the children that I watch get on the bus, you know, the kids who come to my door and ask to walk my dog and their families, their mother who doesn't have a car. So I'm just wondering. I ask these questions, you know, not just as a taxpayer but again as a concerned member of this community who knows that human cost behind numbers because at the end of the day, finger pointing in Washington won't heal anyone here in Bedford. So I'm just asking the council again not to make this long but what are we doing practically and proactively to make sure that our neighbors are not left behind while others debate their worth?
Yeah. Just just this past Friday, I was part of a group of the county, city of Cleveland, the Northeast Ohio Mayors and Managers Association to speak on the the SNAP program and how that was needed, which I think is gonna get funded now because the judge told them, you better do it. And our our big thing to the government was don't play with people's food when you're doing this stuff. And none of the government should be getting or the Congress should be getting paid when we have people that work for the government not getting paid. And that was part of our our message. And I think they heard that that SNAP is gonna happen. And like we were prepared for more more people at our food bank if necessary. If you guys have some more ideas on that?
I'll just add just a couple things. Wanted to reiterate what the mayor said last Friday or last Thursday. I'm sorry. Mayors and managers passed a couple of resolutions. Those were not only to the county but it was really directed to the state level to bring attention to the state level. And I think some of that, you know, we saw less than 24 hours later, Governor DeWine stepped up. Obviously, he was gonna provide some emergency emergency funds. Our biggest thing that we see would be impacted would be food. So what we've done, city council received in my weekly report, we're we may not have the ability to, hey, we're gonna run a pantry 24/7 and whatnot. We just we may not have the funds to do that. But what we pride ourselves on is one, you know, we're a small community. We can point individuals in the right direction to get the help they may need. Is that some type of benefit with utility bills? Is that do they need the healthcare? Is there an issue with housing or food? This past week, I provided council with a long list that Parks and Recreation Department put together for pantries, mobile pantries, food banks, all of that that's taking place right within city of Bedford. So when individuals contact us, we do provide something like that. We have it and it's the last Friday of every month. We're seeing a slight uptick of people that are taking advantage of that. But if they need it more, we're prepared and we already have a comprehensive list to direct in, in this council and administration's position, and the things that we've provided during the immediate impact of the pandemic. When that happened, very similar, different scenarios, but people out of work, how am I gonna pay this? I'm gonna, you know. And what we did was through actions of this council, private donations, that every Friday food pantry that we provided, we were actually doing that every single week for free. People didn't even have to provide, verify, you drive through, you're gonna get a box of food every week. We had a service in place where if individuals, if it was senior citizens and they didn't, they were, couldn't, they were higher, or most vulnerable, sorry, couldn't get to the store to get soap or the, the basic things. You go right on our website, you put in what you need, and a volunteer would drop that stuff off at their home, no cost whatsoever. So, you know, while we may not have the ability to say, hey, we're gonna, here's emergency funds, you know, we don't, we don't have that ability to provide someone. We will point them in the direction that's needed. And if we were contacted today, everyone up here has a list of, hey, Bedford can provide some food on the last Friday, but if you need something this week, or today, or whatever, this is where you need to go. And on a higher level, just as Mayor Coche said, he was there Friday with County Executive Ronain, Mayor Bibb, Countess Woman Brown, at that press conference urging that. So that's some action when you put everybody together, and there's communication going to the state level, and as well as the federal level, you know, it, it gained some attention. And I think that was some of the changes that happened twenty-four hours after that, you know, over the weekend. So I don't know if I kind of answered your question, but...
No, you, you did. I, I, we've been here with the, we've been in Bedford since February of twenty-one. So we came right after COVID, we bought our home. And so, this is my sister with me, so. And so we, you know, we weren't here to, to see what you all did during COVID. And that's great. It's just now that I'm seeing, and, you know, I'm coming to these things, and being more aware of what's going on in my city, and being more aware of what's, because I'm in the thick of it, right? I know what's going on, and I know how it affects people. I've talked to veterans that are being affected right now. I'm working with the Department of Navy to see how are we gonna get our Marines paid, and things of that nature. So I just wanted to know for myself, at least I could ask, if I can forward the information onto anyone else, that's, is I, that's how I wanted to know. I wanted to educate myself.
They can contact City Hall, they can, sorry, they can contact City Hall, they can contact our Parks and Recreation Department, our, our food, our commodity program, we call it, that takes place the last Friday of every month. That is organized and is operated out of the Ellenwood Community Center. So individuals, they can contact them if there's something that, you know, if it was this week, right, beginning of the month, and we're not till the end of the month, we can direct them. Look, there is a lot of the same service, actually more so in, or more frequent than what we provide. We can direct them to those locations as well.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hopefully it'll be over soon. Should've started, but, oh, sorry. Anyone else? Seeing none. Could I have a motion for adjournment by Longino, second by Hasbury? Call the roll, please.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hasbury?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming.